It is five o'clock and I'd like to call the November thirteenth, two thousand and twenty-five work session of the Stanton City Council to order. Is there a motion to appoint an acting city clerk? Counselor Woods?
Hey, I was looking for it. So I moved to appoint John Blair as acting city clerk.
Thank you. Second, is there any discussion?
No.
Mr. Blair, could you please call the roll?
Ms. Park?
Aye.
Mr. Overholzer?
Aye.
Ms. Woods?
Aye.
Mr. Campbell?
Aye.
Mr. Shepherd?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Arrowood?
Aye.
Mayor Edwards?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Thank you, Mr. Blair. I will now entertain a motion to approve the work session and regular meeting agendas.
Madam Mayor, I move to adopt the work session and regular meeting agendas as presented.
Thank you, Counselor Overholzer is our second.
I'll second.
Thank you. Any discussion about that? Then we will call the roll. Please, Mr. Blair.
Ms. Park?
Aye.
Mr. Overholzer?
Aye.
Ms. Woods?
Aye.
Mr. Campbell?
Aye.
Mr. Shepherd?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Arrowood?
Aye.
Mayor Edwards?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Thank you, Mr. Blair. That moves us on quickly to item three, a discussion of city council strategic plan areas, goals and strategy. We have an update on the juvenile and domestic relations district courthouse.
Mr. Keane will kill me if I don't let him go first. So.
It's right in front of my face.
I'm going to introduce.
John, I was not trying to disrespect you. I just, you know.
You were letting me escape.
I just looked right at number three and said, hey, let's just look at the Stanton Plan. Good evening, John. Mr. Keane.
Good evening.
Michelle.
Totally cleared me off now. I almost called you by that. Mayor Edwards, Vice Mayor Arrowood, members of council. Here to give you a brief update on the courthouse, picture behind you of the mostly finished product. Couple significant dates. Substantial completion was achieved on October thirtieth, two thousand and twenty-five, which is two days before it was mandated by the contract documents. The following day, we got a temporary certificate of occupancy, which allows us to start furnishing the building. All mechanical and electrical system final inspections have been held and satisfactorily completed. We still have to have a building final inspection contingent upon getting elevator inspection done and a generator inspection. Specialty equipment delivery started this week. Most of that was security. Standard furniture delivery start next Monday and we'll go through the end of the month. On our slides. The building, I think the building really stands out in lights on that side of town. It's impressive, but it's not intimidating. I think it fits well with the West End. I think it's inviting and I think it can be, you know, sort of the start of good things on the west side of town. I don't think it presents an intimidating appearance to anybody that's coming to the court. And we've got plenty of room to grow, so. There's a wide concrete patio area. Josh has a decent picture of it right there in the very front that we could use for civic gatherings if we wanted to. Go ahead, Josh. This is when you walk in the main door. In front of you is a security booth. That is all bulletproof glass and bulletproof drywall. You enter, there's a magnetometer that you put your belongings in. Prior to this, there's a cellphone locker. You can't take any cellphone lockers and any cellphones into the building, so you have to lock those up. There's rifle storage in there as well. The security system will integrate with our existing card system that we have here in City Hall. So the uniformity across the platforms saves the city money in the long run, maintenance, less inventory and less vendors. The courtroom. The courtroom, I think, is a very warm and inviting space. And we have to remember that this courtroom may be the first introduction to the judicial system for young children. So it's important that they not be intimidated when they walk in there. It's warm, it's quiet, it's got bright colors. And there's also separate rooms directly behind the courtroom where a juvenile can give their testimony in a room without having to face their abuser. That's all done by the Polycom system that the state sets up. That's supposed to be set up within the next three weeks. You can see, back up just a second. You see the ceiling is sound absorbing tiles. That's actually two different ceilings, one lower than the other. And then on the walls, you see the sound attenuation panels. Has a state of the art AV system in it. Second floor, please, Mr. Knight. The grand staircase, you can see on the left-hand side there, that's still a work in progress. Glass handrails who have a cherry cap on the top of it. It has windows on two sides of it, so it's very open, adds a lot of natural light to the upstairs, a lot of natural light to the customer service area for the court services unit. So center picture is a good shot of the terrazzo. Lots of durable materials were used in construction of this building. Terrazzo floors last a long time. Impact resistant wall coverings on the walls, impact resistant drywall in all the detention spaces, obviously. Those three large light fixtures are there, the Vice Mayor Arrowood memorial.
Yes.
Memorial.
He has another name for them.
Yeah, that was, hey, that was what the construction crew called. You know, they serve as a beacon of hope from West Beverly Street. Yeah.
Well said, well said.
Beacon of light.
And the building is really impressive. If you see it from Beverly Street at night, it's a beautiful building. The conference room is where those three large light fixtures are. I know there's been some discussion as far as using that as swing space, possibly having SWEBA meeting there or because it looks out over what eventually will be a finished area. I'm not sure what we're going to do with that space yet, but at some point in time, I expect there to be a panoramic view from there. Interior features. All solid wood cherry doors, which is a very warm appearance. The millwork that you see in the office spaces is the same. A lot of economy space in there as far as storage, you know, built-in trashcans. All the signs have the logo for the city of Stanton on them because at the end of the day, this building is the city of stands, not the Commonwealth of Virginias. So I think it's important that we remember that. It's part of our tradition, so. One cool thing I had never seen before on the far right-hand side, I guess because of the pandemic, you no longer press to exit. You just wave your hand in front of it and the door opens up, so. Outside secure areas. The Commonwealth mandates that there are separate parking areas for the public, for judicial staff and for security personnel, sheriff's department. So the parking lot that you see on the center picture is completely enclosed with brick. That's where the judges park. The one on the right-hand side is the sheriff's parking, which has its own exit out into the, went to West Beverly Street so that they don't have to go through the other parking. On the left-hand side, you can see the gate. You pull up to that gatekeeper and you swipe your card and it determines what parking lot you can park in, so. The sheriff's parking lot also is where the Sallyport is, so there is complete separation between judicial staff and any defendants that might be coming to court, so. Let me see, next slide. Here's the future. We don't know what we're going to do with that yet, but there's plenty of room to grow. If there's a couple of concepts out there, I'm sure you all will be working on those. I will not. And with that, I'd entertain any questions you have.
Questions for Mr. Keane?
I saw you, Vice Mayor Arrowood.
We'll keep calling you back in, yes.
Content question.
Just thinking ahead to the master plan for the overall site. I know that's not your purview, you won't be here, but if we're going to get an update today, but I'm eager about the next steps for that.
I know that they're working hard on it, so I can't tell you where the art of progress was. As far as the courthouse itself, December fifteenth is the first day of operations. We are going to get there by hook or by crook. It's going to be a fight, but we're going to do it.
How did you do it? How did you manage to get this done two days before the mandated date?
Had a good contractor.
Good contractor.
That made a world of difference. Design was a little lacking, but the contractor made up for that and just a team effort by a lot of individuals in the city of Stanton and departments.
Fantastic. Thank you.
Well done.
Yeah.
Thanks.
Thank you. Alrighty, well, now we're going to move on to item three, a discussion of city council strategic plan areas, goals and strategies, also known as the Stanton Plan. Ms. Beauregard?
I'm coming. I was laughing at Mr. Keane. He just ran away from the podium.
Yeah.
Wait a minute. Thank you, John.
The room.
Got it running.
Gather one up, John. Oh.
Sorry, I think I can zoom it.
You have a paper copy of this. This is the document that Councilmember Campbell sent a few hours ago and he and I briefly talked about this before this meeting. Do you want to walk through this?
Do we have paper copies?
You don't, oh, I'm so sorry. You do, actually. Hold on.
Thank you.
Yes, they're coming. I'll just say this before I turn it over to Councilmember Campbell. There's a lot in this plan. It's a little overwhelming. I was trying not to have my head explode when I was working on this, but it's fine. I mean, it's, you know, this is your plan and we're going to do our best. And I think the important thing is just to keep you updated on how things are going and to help you understand why things can't, maybe can't happen as fast as you'd like, but other things will happen faster for other various reasons. So it's very ambitious, I'll just say that. But I've been talking to staff about it the last few months since your retreat. So we're going to be working really hard to accomplish these things, but it's a lot. But I did appreciate what Mr. Campbell did and I'm going to let him walk through kind of what he did because he kind of organized it a little bit differently and then added a few other things that are pretty important as well and I'll let him kind of talk through that.
Yes. So basically, our current Stanton Plan very condensed and focused and a lot of the the goals and strategies are not well-defined, they're more broad and kind of open-ended. So I think we did great work with, through our two retreats and discussing this and coming up with an actual strategic areas, goals and then strategies to implement those with timelines and potential schedules. Just looking at what was provided in the agenda packet tonight, it's just a lot of information, especially for someone, a member of the public, trying to figure out what are our priorities for the next one to three years. So I just wanted to get everything on kind of, trying to get to one page, but it spilled over. So I think this captures everything and like, I did tweak some things, I added a few things that I mentioned last time that I thought were important that weren't in there, particularly specifically mentioned Stanton City schools in terms of their capital needs. I put West End back in there, especially with the opportunities with the rest of our courthouse property. But other than that, it's pretty much the same and I just kind of condensed everything into these four topics. So this is still, like Leslie said, a very dream big or go home plan, which is good. It's just that, you know, even at this level, it's a lot. So I just kind of wanted to put this out there to see what you all think and I thought it could help drive our discussion tonight.
And let me just see if my understanding is right. This would be a document that would guide us for about the next two years, is that the intention?
Yeah, so when we had our retreats, the intent would be we could have maybe another small retreat next year, calendar year, and then when the new council seats, when there's a new council or after the next election, rather, you would have a retreat, a kind of a longer retreat, probably. Again, I think the fall timeframe makes sense because it gets everybody past the budget. You kind of, if you're new on council, it's hard to come on council, put a budget together and strategically plan at the same time. So I think the fall timeline is good. So yeah, I think, and then each of these things can be revisited, things added, subtracted, kind of like what you did at the last retreat. So I want to keep, kind of keeping that going would be good. And as far as the timelines that I put on the agenda, this is after talking to staff and kind of trying to get real about it, because a lot of these things frankly require funding, several of them would be CIP projects, which would have to be put into a capital budget and we started that process at the staff level. So we're going to be talking about this in our, some upcoming internal meetings that we're having on the CIP as departments have submitted their projects to Jesse for consideration.
And just clarify, I think like the spreadsheet format that's in the agenda packet, I think it's great because that's what we need as an internal document to track this and see how we're progressing. But again, just as an idea for a public-facing document. And maybe this gets even whittled down and refined even more so it's cleaned up.
Yeah, so if you looked at the two-page that was in the packet, that was our attempt to actually summarize everything very broadly. And then we can add other areas as we get, as we have updates sent out in a more, in a form that's more digestible to the general public. And then the website is kind of the same way. So we can start, I mean, I know we need to start thinking about dashboards, how we're going to measure things, that's going to be part of the budget discussion coming up. So we've already talked about and thought about how we display these publicly with a good amount of data, but not overwhelming with too much. We want to make sure it's understandable and can be digested.
I like the fact that it's ambitious. I think we should should have stretched goals and it's better to have tried than not to have attempted something ambitious and maybe in some areas we will fall short, but we'll be accountable to ourselves and to the public and we'll acknowledge if there are resources that we need to hit that stretch goal. But that's where you'll keep us honest and say this is what we need. This is a lot to digest and I confess I wasn't able to go through it thoroughly. I would like to suggest maybe a process for a next step. I do appreciate Counsel Campbell for reframing this and for getting these themes and putting the initiatives under each theme. I wonder if we could maybe have a sort of divide and conquer subcommittee approach and have two council members work with you and your staff and just kind of do a final refinement of this and make sure that each of these is specific, measurable and time-based, that there's a timeline. It has to be something that you're comfortable with, feel that makes sense for staff and then have a final version to present to council at the December meeting. So go ahead, I'm sorry.
No, it's okay. I'll go if you. I just wanted to say I really like this sort of, it's like a community-centered approach, just that it all revolves around the community, a vibrant community, a sustainable community, a healthy community and engaged community. And that's the whole framework and everything comes out of that is for the community and what is going to make it a stronger, healthier, better place to live. I do notice that, yeah, I mean, there are so many things and making it time-based is important, but it really looks like everything is a priority, all of it is a priority. And when you have like eighteen priorities and all of them are going to take about eighteen years, that's going to be, that's going to be the struggle. So I'd say that might be a first, another step is like, and again, Ms. Beauregard, you may have already been discussing this with your staff when you're looking at creating a dashboard and how to prioritize projects in a workflow. How do we look at what gets done first?
And maybe that's, I mean, I was hoping tonight to hear from you all to see if this captures everything, if we're missing anything, because maybe the next step would be to, let's organize this to say, what do we hope to accomplish immediately, year one? Because a lot of this stuff is planning, like come up with a plan for what we're going to do next and that's a little longer term, obviously.
Well, in here, I see a couple of items that already is taking place, but it's a timeline that we need to focus on and see and how all of this will fit into a timeline that is best worked out. So that, I think that's what, because I've heard both of you all say and you about the timeline of the items that is in here and how can we get those to work? So I, I'm not sure whether, you know, a committee of two would help, but that would be okay. But I mean, we could put in the input now and, you know, flesh out some of this stuff and with the committee, just feed it to the persons that will be on the committee and best to see how we can work towards that.
One thing in looking at this document in particular, I see that I felt that we were all in agreement on looking into would be the Airbnb regulations.
Yeah, and some of these, like some of these I put in parentheses that, I didn't mention it specifically, but that's where it would be incorporated.
Okay.
So again, Airbnb would, I thought it would be under the fourth bullet, under vibrant community, continue to evaluate and update city code, land use development procedures.
Okay, so that would catch it in that, okay. Just not called out by name.
Yeah.
Any other comments?
It's exciting to see, you know, because a lot of these things are things that the previous council started working on and we're continuing on with and we're all in agreement with this. This is a very aggressive plan on this and we also are seeing a lot of things, you know, living in interesting times, things like the wharf, you know, the line coming from the reservoir, generational things that are, happen to land on ours on that while we also try to adapt to a very quickly changing modern world. And I think this is just a great guideline. We just have to be sure that we're not trying to kill staff.
Yeah, and I would appreciate that. I would like to say I don't have any time to sit on a committee with you, Leslie, so. I mean, I'm happy to answer a call, but I would say, wait, you know, we could offer input and but I think you know what Counsel Campbell has done. And do you feel like you have enough information or you really won't just?
So are you all, okay, let me ask this. Are you all comfortable with how Councilmember Campbell has framed these?
I didn't know, I didn't put these in any particular order.
Right.
I just, yeah.
I mean, as far as like, kind of how they're framed, just, I'm just looking at the wording of them and kind of how they're, okay.
If this is the public-facing document, I would like to see, maybe we don't specifically call it Airbnb, but we call it.
It's not even right.
Yeah. So that it's clear.
Yeah.
That that's something we're trying to discuss. Because that's, I don't know about you guys, but I get hit with that a lot.
Yeah.
No, I agree. And this is a question for Councilmember Campbell. Were these kind of headings, you're like in a kind of a new goal area or just a rewarding of them or, I mean, I like them. I think the way.
The language under the topics or?
Like vibrant community, resilient and sustainable.
Yeah, I just reimagined the four we have.
Yeah, okay.
For continuity and.
Yeah. Do you all like that?
I think it's great. Does anyone not?
Looking at it initially, I'm just kind of, I mean, looking at it initially, I just, but I left work and came straight here and I hadn't seen this yet. So I was trying to soak it in as quickly as possible, but it's hard to, you know, I just would like some time. Well, how about this? How about you take some time? I'll reach out to each of you, right, maybe after, I don't know, Thanksgiving's in a few weeks. I'll reach out to you next week. How about that?
There you go.
We'll have some discussions and maybe I could get a couple, you know, some of you to buy or we'll figure something out. We'll figure out how to get some input from everybody. And then are you all interested in having us come back as Mr. Overholzer's suggesting in December with something or do you want to? I mean, I'd be curious to.
Working on it a year, so. But we do need some time to digest this and to kind of further wordsmith it and be sure that it, we don't need to expand it anymore. We've got a whole year of identifying what are the priorities, what do we need to do? It's just wordsmithing and making sure that it's prioritized and time.
I think once we meet next week, we can see if it's necessary to.
Let's do that. How about that? Okay.
And I really appreciate, this is great, especially I just look at things in the eyes of my students too and like, because we use this in class sometimes, so this is really nice. Thank you.
That's helpful.
Alrighty. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Anybody else?
Okay, perfect.
Goodness. We are fifteen minutes early. It is fine. So moving on to item four, our final item of the work session, I will entertain a motion to enter a closed meeting.
Madam Mayor?
Vice Mayor?
Arrowood.
Arrowood.
Thank you. I moved under a closed meeting for, one, discussion of the performance of the Stanton City Manager pursuant to Virginia Code Section 2.2-3711A1 and consultation with legal counsel, the Stanton City Attorney, for a specific matter related to contractual provision of a public contract and its conformity with Code of Virginia requiring the provision of legal advice pursuant to Virginia Code Section 2.2-3711A8.
Well done. Is there a second?
Madam Mayor, I second it.
Thank you, Counselor Woods. Any discussion on that? Mr. Blair, could you please call the roll?
Yes. Ms. Park?
Aye.
Mr. Campbell?
Aye.
Ms. Woods?
Aye.
Mr. Overholzer?
Aye.
Mr. Shepherd?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Arrowood?
Aye.
Mayor Edwards?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Thank you. We are now in closed session. Alrighty, hope to see you all back at seven. I will now entertain a motion to reconvene in an open meeting.
Madam Mayor?
Counselor Woods?
I move that council reconvene in an open meeting and certify to the best of each member's knowledge that only lawfully exempted public business matters were discussed and only public business matters as identified in a closed meeting motion were heard, discussed or considered in the meeting.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Mr. Blair, will you please call the roll?
Ms. Woods?
Aye.
Mr. Shepherd?
Aye.
Mr. Campbell?
Aye.
Mr. Overholzer?
Aye.
Ms. Park?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Arrowood?
Aye.
Mayor Edwards?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Thank you, Mr. Blair. The work session is adjourned. Well, everyone, it is seven oh-two and I'd like to call the November thirteenth, two thousand and twenty-five, regular meeting of the Stanton City Council to order. Please stand as you are able and join me for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good evening, everyone. We have Councilwoman Park bringing the invocation to us this evening.
Hello, everyone. This is a prayer that I actually tried to do in June, I believe, but I was in Michigan zooming in and it got all crazy, so I'm going to give it another go. And also, I just think. And also I just think it really means a lot to me because it's just especially you're feeling overwhelmed and as we enter this season, it, it brings me a lot of peace and I hope it does you as well. So it's called the Romero Prayer. It helps now and then to step back and take a long view. The kingdom is not only beyond our efforts, it is even beyond our vision. We accomplish in our lifetime only a tiny fraction of the magnificent enterprise that is God's work. Nothing we do is complete, which is a way of saying that the kingdom always lies beyond us. No statement says all that could be said. No prayer fully expresses our faith. No confession brings perfection. No pastoral visit brings wholeness. No set of goals and objectives include everything. This is what we are about. We plant the seeds that one day grow. We water seeds already planted, knowing that they hold future promise. We lay foundations that will need further development. We cannot do everything and there is a sense of liberation in realizing that. This enables us to do something and to do it very well. It may be incomplete, but it is a beginning, a step along the way, an opportunity for the Lord's grace to enter and do the rest. We may never see the end results, but that is the difference between the master builder and the worker. We are workers, not master builders, not ministers, not messias. We are prophets of a future not our own.
Amen. Thank you, Councilwoman Park. It was beautiful. Oh, it's hard to top. Good evening, everyone, and I want to thank you for attending this evening. I have a few words not as, as deep and eloquent as what Councilwoman Park brought to us, but I have been thinking about Thanksgiving and about what I'm thankful for here in Stanton. And I know, and I know that you know, that life isn't always easy and our community faces real challenges. And many of our neighbors carry burdens that we can't fully see. There's suffering, worry, and there's loss. And we should never ignore that. But alongside those realities, there's also joy, resilience, and kindness. Tonight on World Kindness Day, I want to encourage all of us to look for that joy, to name it when we see it, and to help others find it as well. We can't do everything, but we can all do something and we can do it with kindness. I'm grateful for our city staff, for all our employees who keep things running, often without recognition, for my colleagues on city council who care deeply about the community and who work hard on its behalf, and all who are watching or following along from home or who are simply out there taking care of life. Each of you matters to me. As we head into the holiday season, I hope you will take good care of yourselves and if you can, take care of someone else. Thank you and I wish you all a peaceful and meaningful Thanksgiving. We will not have a meeting in two weeks because of that holiday. Counselors, anyone like to share a word? Word? Oh, you can do it after. Counselors, anyone like to share?
I would just like to thank staff for all their hard work for, we, Monday night, we had our third and final Conference of Plan Update, Public Open House. Staff just did amazing job working with our consultant, doing the plan update with us. It was a tremendous amount of information shared at Bessie Weller Elementary School Monday evening. We had a good turnout. I think we ended up with 65, 70 members of the public for our third and final meeting. So I just want to thank staff for that and give a heads up that we will next be doing a, a survey, sharing that information. I think it's going to be open until December, sometime in mid-December, but trying to get more participation from the public with the comp plan, because at this point, we have our goals, recommendations, and strategies all out there for public review and prioritization. So, thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Campbell. Counselor Overholzer?
Yes, there was also a wonderful land use workshop, lasted over two days this last week, organized by the Alliance for the Shenandoah Valley and with the participation of landowners and city staff, challenged us to, with examples from other communities and with creative ideas about how to protect and conserve our natural areas while also leaving room for development in a, in a, in a logical and appropriate way. So appreciate that very much, that a lot happened this last week with ribbon cuttings. A number of us were at the Wawa ribbon cutting. There was a ribbon cutting for the 100th anniversary of Braden and Fawson. It was wonderful to honor them and their legacy in this community.
I'd like to, I had an opportunity to go to the Daubarn Awards. And if anyone is familiar with those, it's for the, the Saw region, Stan and Augusta-Wainsborough Teachers. And it was put together by Buzz Daubarn, I think back in the 60s there, who, who felt that teachers not only needed recognition, they needed hard cash. So the, the award comes with a check for $10,000, which is definitely appreciated by the teachers. And it was just great to see the exemplary teachers that were nominated by their students, by their, by their associates on that. And it was just such a great event. And that was here in, in Stanton, held this, this year in Stanton. Also, on a, on a, on a separate note, we, we haven't had an opportunity to respond directly with this, but we're, the council, this council is very aware of residents' concerns regarding this, the city's contract with, with, with Flock, the license plate reader cameras. And I just want to inform public that this council is speaking with staff about specific concerns with that contract and has directed them to look into some things and reach out to, to Flock about this. And, and we are moving forward with that and we'll have more in coming months on that. But we, we, we aren't getting into an immediate discussion publicly on, on that.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Forgot. One more thing, I just want to say thank you to Stanton Rotary for organizing, again, a wonderful Veterans Day parade on Saturday. It was absolutely beautiful weather and it was just a great event to, for the city to turn out and recognize those who served our country.
Yeah, it was terrific. Thank you, Counselor Campbell.
I got there and you were all hanging out by the Pierce Arrow and I thought I was the only one coming.
Yes, I got to sit in the Pierce Arrow behind the wheel. That was a real treat.
I was going to be alone in the back of a pickup truck waving.
Maybe one more quick thing.
Yes, sir.
I forgot. I wanted to just extend congratulations to Maggie Reagan, who was reelected as Commissioner of Revenue, and Rick Johnson, reelected as Treasurer, Stanton Treasurer. And congratulations to John Baber, who is newly elected as Commonwealth Attorney for Stanton.
Sheriff.
And the sheriff.
Yes.
Thank you.
I think he might be here.
There's, there, there he is.
He's the bright red fellow back there. Congratulations, Sheriff. Glad to have you back.
And at this time, Madam Mayor.
Yes, ma'am.
I would like to have a moment of silence for former council member Brenda Mead on the passing of her husband, Robert. So if you'll join me in a moment of silence, please. Thank you so much for joining me. Now I have a nominations committee motion and I move to reappoint Alex Avery to the Historic Preservation Commission for a three-year term commencing November 1st, 2025, and concluding on October 31st, 2028.
Is that her only name?
Mm hmm.
Mr. Blair, would you please call the roll?
Ms. Park?
Aye.
Mr. Overholzer?
Aye.
Ms. Woods?
Aye.
Mr. Campbell?
Aye.
Mr. Shepherd?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Arrowood?
Aye.
Mayor Edwards?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Thank you, Mr. Blair. And thank you to the nominations committee for, for that work. And thank you, Counselor Woods.
And I just wanted, I was supposed to add, so, we have openings on our boards and commissions and I know in our audience is newly finished, our, what is it, Stanton Citizens University graduates. So if, please, City Stanton resident, we need you on our boards and commissions. So that's a great way to serve our city in that capacity. So, thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Woods. That, with that, that is a great segue into giving our Citizen University graduates their recognition. If you graduated from Stanton City University program, would you please stand and come forward so everyone can see you?
Dean.
Good evening. Hey, good evening.
It's lovely.
Congratulations.
They let anybody in that program, huh, Pete? Even Pete Hickman.
Video of your hair.
Okay, 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 let it go, let it go. Well, I want to take a moment to express my sincere gratitude to all the participants of Stanton City University. Your commitment to understanding how our local government operates is truly commendable. Over the past 10 weeks, you have engaged with key departments and learned firsthand about the vital services that keep our city running smoothly. This program not only equips you with knowledge, but also fosters a valuable dialogue between residents and city officials. Your feedback helps us improve our services and ensures that our government remains responsive to the needs of our community. After all, who better to tell us what we're doing right or wrong and bring new ideas to the table than the folks who actually live here? I am particularly looking forward to seeing many of you take this knowledge and use it to become more involved in our city, just as Counselor Woods said, whether through volunteering or serving on boards and commissions, your contributions make a real difference. Thank you for your dedication and for being active and formed citizens. Together, we are building a stronger city. At this time, I'd like to read the names of all the participants that completed the course and after all the names are called, please come up front for, oh, please come forward, stand where you are and have your, your photograph taken. Okay, that was terrific. Well done, Mayor. Well done. Okay, first up is Andrew Zipser. Hello. Bib Frazier, Brad Lovelace, Casey Wolf, Clark Draper, Chris Funk, Dolly Frazier, Dom Rodriguez, Farrah Wright, Coy Herd, John Raeford, Joshua North, Julian Pete Hickman, Karen Ress, Liam Risto, Lisa Wells, Nicole Kern, Nina Gagnon, Nora Sutton, Patricia Hardisty, Raymond Scher, Sally Byrd, Scotty Tierney, Vincent Grasso, and Wendy Love. Thank, congratulations to all of you. You guys want to, can you squish like you love each other a little? We must know each other pretty well.
Yeah. Scotty and I love each other.
Can we get out of the way?
Yeah, I guess we'll just stand over.
Do we stand or stick our heads? Do we look like pinheads?
Oh, there, yeah.
Do the kneeling thing, yeah.
One, two, three. I'll do a couple more. One, two, three. Perfect. Great, thank you.
Thank you. Thank you all so much. Congratulations. That was fun. Okay. Whew. Boy, we have a, we always have a lot of fun. Moving on to item A, the consent agenda. Per Procedure Memorandum Number 14, it is the policy of City Council to have routine non-controversial items placed on a consent agenda. All items on the consent agenda will be voted on in one motion. If separate discussion of an item is requested by any member of council, that item shall be removed and considered separately at the end of the regular meeting agenda. Do any council members wish to remove any items to be placed at the end of the regular meeting agenda for separate consideration? Hearing none, I will now entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda.
Madam Mayor, I move to approve the consent agenda as presented.
Is there a second?
A second.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Then, Mr. Blair, will you please call the roll?
Ms. Woods?
Aye.
Mr. Shepherd?
Aye.
Mr. Campbell?
Aye.
Mr. Overholzer?
Aye.
Ms. Park?
Aye.
Ms. Mayor Arrowood?
Aye.
Mayor Edwards?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Thank you. We have an extremely long meeting tonight, so tuck in, get relaxed. Just kidding, we have one item, a very special item. We're here tonight to recognize the accomplishments of Kathy and Bill Frazier. And I can, so, wait for it.
Staff put together kind of a montage of your successes that we'd like to show. And the mayor, of course, has a proclamation. So I think he's gonna, I think Josh is gonna start this. There we go. There's no sound. It's not a movie. It's just, I don't think there's music. That would have been kind of interesting. We didn't have time to put music in. But in case people don't know, everything you're seeing, Bill and Kathy Frazier were responsible for, but I'm going to let Mayor Edwards read the proclamation, which, okay.
So while you all are listening and looking at a few things around our city, I will read the proclamation from Stanton City Council, Kathy and Bill Frazier. Whereas, working together, Kathy and Bill Frazier participated in and led many transformational efforts to protect and improve Stanton's historic fabric by developing the public signage system for the historic districts, transforming Stanton from anywhere USA to a coordinated, historically compatible system throughout the downtown. And whereas, they assisted the city in applying for and receiving Main Street designation and served on the Design Committee for decades, as well as developed the facade improvement program for Historic Stanton Foundation that offered free design services to downtown business owners. And whereas Bill, as the first executive director of Historic Stanton Foundation, oversaw the creation of four of the historic districts in Stanton. And whereas Kathy designed the R.R. Smith Center, Old Y Lofts, the Stanton Hub, the award-winning New Street parking garage, and many of the facades on downtown Beverly Street, among many other logo projects. And whereas they led the effort to create and implement a plan and raise funds to upgrade various elements of the Gypsy Hill Park entrance, including the new gateway sign, restoration of the existing gates and brick piers, reconstruction of three historic spring boxes, installation of historically styled streetlights, repairs to the garden center, and installation of interpretive signage throughout. And whereas the many honors and recognitions that Stanton has received for its vibrant downtown and top-quality historic preservation would not have happened without the talent, professionalism, and dedication of Kathy and Bill Frazier, who have contributed to Stanton since the late 1970s. And whereas, without Kathy and Bill Frazier, there would be no thriving Historic Stanton and Stanton would not be able to take its rightful place as the gem of the Shenandoah Valley. Now, therefore, be it proclaimed by Stanton City Council that the City of Stanton honors Kathy and Bill Frazier with the key to the City of Stanton and that the city recognizes the legacy of Kathy and Bill Frazier as the first family of preservation.
Mayor, members of council, receiving a key to the city is a sincere honor for us and we're extremely grateful. Thank you for this thoughtful recognition of our modest contributions to this wonderful community of Stanton that we have and always will love being a part of. One of the most interesting eras for me, and I've got a story or two to tell you, was that late to tell you, was that late Wilson Sterrett, who was mayor back in the 80s or 90s, and he told me that the city council wasn't completely on board with this new idea of historic preservation. And perhaps we needed more parking, and we can't save every old building. And he would call me out to his office, and we would sit and talk. And I'd become increasingly frustrated with his questions. And they would be like, what's the use of having a bunch of old buildings if they're all empty? And I'd say, well, downtown's value right now is about $25 million in real estate. If the buildings weren't three-fourths empty, we'd have a valuation of over $75 million of tax, taxes for properties. And if we don't take advantage of that, then we just keep increasing the residential side. And he would nod, and then he said, yeah, but it just isn't practical. There's just not enough parking. People don't like the traffic. And I said, well, it's a destination. It's not an obstacle course. Downtown should be where everybody ends up, not where they see how fast they could get through. And one night, a member of another state agency said, your biggest problem is parking. You need to get all the parking off the streets. And in my typical subtle way, I said, whoever bought something going 30 miles an hour. This continued, and he finally, I kept answering these questions, and he kept coming up with more difficult ones. And I said, can we stop this conversation? And he said, yeah. I said, why are you doing this to me? I thought we were gonna work on this together. He said, because I've got a council meeting tonight, and I'm gonna get asked a bunch of questions, and I wanted to know the answers before. So he was quite a character. And he came up with this vision for Stanton. And he wrote this, I'm just gonna read it to you. What can Stanton be like in the next five years? Well, this was a number of years ago. It can change its face more than any time within the past 100 years. It can come alive like never before in history. It can be an exciting place to live, a city that's totally unique, the most talked about small town in Virginia. Everything to accomplish this is in place. The people, the place, the organizations, with the needed expertise, the intelligence, the courage, the private investors, the cooperative city government, let's get going, and let's make this all come about. Let's start a quest for the best. And that was his, his tagline for helping downtown revitalize. This positive attitude continued into the great renaissance of our city, although it's taken longer than five years. And realistically, as we all know, downtown revitalization never ends. It just changes. Any successful venture requires continual change and investments in those changes. And a final note on Mayor Sterrett. He often made a few of us honorary members of the city staff. And I have my identification in my wallet, where I happen to have been designated as the Vice Admiral of the Lewis Creek Navy. I'm still waiting on that naval pension that didn't come. We also want to acknowledge and thank all the coworkers at Historic Stanton and Frazier Associates over the years we've worked with, and the Board of Historic Stanton as well, to achieve so many of these projects. They're a wonderful team, and we obviously couldn't have done that. We wish, we could name them all, but that would, everyone would be leaving while I was still reading. Kathy's gonna say a couple comments about why she came to Stanton and what ended up happening.
I can't thank you enough. I mean, I'm just fighting back some tears here, but thank you so much, and I appreciate everybody being here. And yeah, I wrote out some things because I, just to kind of talk about how I found Stanton. I grew up in Roanoke, and I went to Mary Baldwin. And I, back then, I was in the 70s, they had a January term where you could go take one course or an internship. And I was, my second year, I was starting to get, I was gonna be an art major, but I got interested in architecture. And I thought, no, I really want to go into architecture. So TJ Collins and Sons still existed. And so I got a January term internship there to start drawing architecture. And I met this guy who was there doing his architectural history thesis from UVA on TJ Collins. And so that's where we met. And it was a moment that seared in my brain forever, the first time I turned around and met him. And that was 50 years ago. And so, anyway, let me, so I did that internship, and then that spring, Historic Stanton, he went to work for Historic Stanton Foundation. They got a grant to start doing the survey of the historic buildings. There was only the Wharf Historic District then, and that was done early on by Historic Stanton to save, there was a V-dot, they were gonna plow through and tear down buildings and create a road. And Historic Stanton was created to make the district and save the Wharf Historic District. And so then they got a grant, and they started surveying all the other historic buildings and creating the historic districts we have today, the Beverly, you know, all the other historic districts. And I was his intern doing that as well. And so then I went off to UVA and Architecture School, and he became the director of Historic Stanton. And during that time, and they were doing all this survey, they were really realizing that the most threatened buildings in Stanton were in the downtown, and what could we be doing to try to save them? And he had the idea of doing a facade improvement program, just like you mentioned. And he hired me out of Architecture School to start, you know, I was on the street every day, meeting property owners, and all the buildings in them were like painted yellow, and all the windows were covered up and painted to make it look like a mall. You know, you know, it's like historic, no, we're gonna make it look like the mall. In fact, businesses were leaving and going to the mall. Of course, that's all changed now. But anyway. So he hired me, and I came and started doing the design work for the facade improvement program. And I was there from '78. We got married in '82, and then left in '83. And so over that period of time, we worked with so many property owners, and we did about 60 facades, and it really began to change how people were looking at the downtown and the architecture. They just didn't get it. And Historic Stanton was also doing all sorts of educational programs and just telling people what the amazing architecture is in Stanton. And I've, over, you know, the period of time with Frazier Associates, we've done the Virginia Main Street Program, and I'm looking at my old drawings that, that's really funny. But anyway, I don't know how you all found this, but that was pretty funny. So, sorry, I got off track there. But I did want to tell you one thing, one of my favorite stories in doing all those facade projects. Who, who remembers the Beverly Restaurant? Janet and Paul?
Yes.
Oh, good. You remember. So Janet and Paul, their building at that point was one of those that had put a modern storefront in, it was all painted yellow, and the windows were covered up. And they wanted to bring it back, that we had shown them historic pictures of it, and they wanted to rebuild the storefront, the historic storefront, and paint it and do everything, which was gonna be a pretty, you know, meticulous job. But they said, the only thing is, we can't close the business. And so it was kind of like, okay, how are we gonna do that? So we had a very creative contractor who went and built the storefront off-site. They closed early one day after lunch. He came, took out the old storefront, put in the new storefront, got it all ready. They opened up for breakfast the next day. I mean, and it was so hilarious. And so, and of course, that was the place that every, you know, coffee clout, you know, all these groups would go there and have coffee. And so they're always used to coming to the Beverly. And so I went down that morning, the next morning, to just sort of see how people were reacting. And it was so funny, because there were some older men walking back and forth going, what happened to the Beverly? What happened to the Beverly? Where'd it go? And poor Janet was inside freaking out. And then finally, everybody was, said, timeout, it's fine, it's still here. But that was a great time. So, you know, over that period of time that we were there, 60 facades got done, and it really began to change the whole perception of downtown. And it really was amazing. And so to have gotten to work with the Virginia Main Street Program over the 39 years of Frazier Associates, I've worked in over 50 communities around Virginia. And I tell you, nobody of a town this size has the architecture like Stanton. And it's just such an honor, and it's so beautiful. And y'all are doing a great job keeping it preserved. So, thank you. Thank you again. This is such a honor.
I have a short postscript. Another story on a, we would meet every Monday morning at a Historic Stanton with the staff. There were five of us. And it turns out that Kathy had met a, one of the property, or son or somebody, one of the property owners, and they had gone down to have a beer downtown. And so they decided to get a six-pack of beer and sit in the intersection of
Well, I told him, I said, let's come to Stanton. And I said, I gotta show you downtown Stanton. And it was like, when it'd be like seven o'clock at night. I said, come on, get your beer. We're gonna come. And we sat in the middle of the intersection of Beverly and Augusta and drank beer.
Did not see a car, didn't see a person.
Not a person, not a car.
Nothing. Anyway, we also want to wrap up by saying that we've
He was doing the same thing.
Yeah, there are a few more places now downtown to go to than there were then. In wrapping up, we just also wanted to say that we've always enjoyed the partnership with the City of Stanton, its leadership, dozens of city council members, and at least a half a dozen city managers since 1976, and many department heads. And only a few recent names came to mind, but it's a very partial list, but Bernie Murphy, Steve Owen, Steve Rosenberg, many department heads, Sharon Angle, Bill Hamilton, more recently, Leslie Beauregard, Rodney Rhodes, Chris Tuttle, only to name a few. And again, that would be a much longer list. Thank you all again, and the city government, past and present, by making Stanton one of the best revitalized small cities in the country, with over 50-plus national awards and media recognition due to the continual strong partnership with the private sector, the city, both property owners and merchants, and several of our nonprofits. Let's continue that quest for the best again. And I thank you for this wonderful honor, and Kathy and I are here to support and assist however we can as things move forward. Thank you.
The Stanton Downtown Development Association is the continuation of Virginia Main Street Program that the Frazier's were so key to creating. And we want to thank them for their vision of preservation for the city, to keep what we have and move forward into the modern world and remain the gem of the city, of the valley, while so many other places knocked down what they had to build small rectangles that looked like air conditioners stuffed with asbestos, as it has been described. But it's an honor to be able to give the Frazier's the key to the city by unanimous votes.
Unanimous votes. Let's see it.
Here, we'll go one, two, three. I'm gonna do a few, make a quick tease. One, two, three.
Gonna be okay carrying that frame? That's a heavy, heavy, heavy. I know, right? We could have just done that. Alrighty. Moving on to our next item, we have matters from the city manager. Don't get too used to that, having a short agenda like that. But I just have a few things I want to announce this evening. We do not have a second meeting in November, as Mayor Edwards already announced, and that is Thanksgiving. And city offices and facilities will be closed for Thanksgiving and Thursday of Thanksgiving and Friday, the next day. If you have residential trash pickup for that Thursday and Friday, please put your can out the day before on Wednesday, November 26. If you have a Thursday or Friday pickup, it's Wednesday the day before, November 26. The recycling center will also be closed Thursday and Friday, but will reopen on Saturday, the 29th, from 8 to 2. And the library will close early on Wednesday at 5:00, and will be closed Thursday and Friday as well. Also, the SAW MPO Policy Board has released the draft 2050 Long Range Transportation Plan. This has a 45-day comment period, which ends on December 4. This is a plan that must be updated and improved every five years to ensure the MPO remains compliant with federal regulation and the region can continue to receive federal funding for projects. You, as residents, are encouraged to provide feedback. And the feedback form, information in the feedback form is at connect.cspdc.org/sawmpolrtp. I'm sure if you just Google Long Range Transportation Plan PDC, it'll come up as well. And those are the two items I have this evening. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Beauregard. That takes us to our final item for the evening, and that is Matters from the Public. It is a time that council sets aside to hear from citizens and others about a wide variety of subjects. A copy of the Stanton City Council's Matters from the Public rules are available in paper form at the clerk's desk and online at the City of Stanton's website. Please familiarize yourself with those rules before commenting. If you would like to speak, please come to the podium now or raise your hand on Zoom. First, give us your name and address. Complete your remarks within five minutes. And as a reminder, this is a time for council to listen. Please speak with the city manager, Leslie Beauregard, or one of us following the meeting, if you would like an answer to a comment or a question. So if you'd like to, if anyone would like to speak, please approach the podium or raise your hand on Zoom.
Good evening. My name is Joshua North.
Good evening.
My address is 16 Woodley Road. I do not have a prepared speech, so I'll say, Madam Mayor Edwards, Vice Mayor Erhead, the entire city council, the, the last 10 weeks has been fantastic. As one of the people you recognize for the Stanton City University, and I would like to just say thank you. Thank you for the entire, the entire 10 weeks. The one thing that I would take away, or the multiple things I would take away from this 10 weeks, is that we got, we had meetings and presentations by fantastic people. Mr. Erhead, city manager Leslie, assistant city manager Amanda, our city attorney, John Blair, Sheriff Heartless, and so many countless other people that this class, one of my other classmates said upstairs, this class got a chance to shine a light on the unspoken, behind-the-scenes people, the cogs of the whole system that make this city great. There has been not a single day that went by, or a single class that went by, that we have never, that every single person that we got to speak with loves their job. that we have never, that every single person that we got to speak with loves their job. They love the city and they love what they do. Josh, Josh has been apologizing for this over the last 10 weeks because we've been running over by about 30 minutes every session. And that's okay by me. Yes, it makes for some late nights. But we got to see so many people who loved the city with a, with a burning passion. I personally have only lived in Stanton for four years and it makes me want to stay for 40. It makes me, it makes me love this city. So I want to say a special thank you to Bo, Josh and Morgan for hosting us every night, answering all the crazy questions that we might come up with. I want to thank the presenters. I want to just thank everybody who made Stanton City University a thing. And I would also say if there's anybody in the crowd or on Zoom who is listening, when you see that email coming through to say, would you like to do it? Do it. It's 10 weeks, it's two hours commitment every, every week. But it's the best 20 hours that you could probably spend to learn more about the city. And that's my remarks, so thank you all.
Thank you so much.
Mr. Boyd, Mr. Knight, do we have any hands raised on Zoom?
We have no hands raised.
We have anyone who would like to speak?
Madam Mayor, may I? I'm sorry.
No, not at all.
So thank you so much. That was very touching to hear and I truly enjoyed presenting in front of them as well. And so I'm so glad to hear everything you all of a sudden went through, so thank you for that. But I also want to recognize somebody here. This is Ms. Kaufman's final meeting with the city. She is taking another job and so this will be her last meeting with us. And so I just want to thank her for her work the last two and a half years with the city and wish her the best in her future adventure.
Thank you, Amanda. Are we on hands raised or standing at the podiums? All right, thank you.
Hello.
Good evening.
My name's Deborah Kushner and I'm a Stanton City resident. I'm so glad to hear that you all are talking about the Flock cameras. A few more points. News stories about Flock camera issues abound. Some headlines from the last, since the last city council meeting. After police used Flock cameras to accuse a Denver woman of theft, she had to prove her own innocence. Lawmakers say stolen police logins are exposing Flock surveillance cameras to hackers. Lynnwood Washington Police Department suspends Flock camera system above amid concerns over ICE access. And Flock haters cross political divides to remove error prone cameras. And in that article, the haters were two U.S. senators calling for a federal investigation alleging that Flock had been negligently handling Americans' personal data by failing to use cybersecurity best practices. One senator wrote Flock CEO that because of Flock's loose security standards, abuse of Flock cameras is inevitable and billions of people's harvested data is at risk. And notably, the many articles about the Washington lawsuit in which two jurisdictions sued a citizen who filed a public records request for Flock data, pointing out the confusion over who owns the data and where violations of privacy are upheld. And most importantly, where privacy issues aren't upheld. My research as to how our cameras came to be stalled. It seems that our police department contacted Flock for information. Did the city okay the plan or was there research or public discussion? Did the community have input? And thus far, I've only been able to find the September 2024 contract with Flock and Chief Williams' October update to the council. I think the surveilled public should know these details. And I still don't know the length of the pilot program. Are we in the full program now? Will three more cameras be installed? And if so, where? Did any part of this process include public participation? And if not, I really take issue with being left out of that conversation of a program that is mass surveillance, no matter how it's marketed. Our country has a new landscape and our community is newly engaged, judging from the historic large crowds that have gathered just a few blocks away several times since the summer. And Flock isn't just a police tool. It's also a tool for immigration enforcement. To maintain their quota demands, ICE continues to find ways to surveil. New surveillance tools are constantly being developed. There is a gate recognition tool now that identifies people by their walk. Fingerprints can now be gleaned from photographs. Our government is the biggest surveillance customer and the local level is one of the very few places we can affect decisions that affect our community members. You all may recall October's violent kidnapping in Harrisonburg when a mother was wrestled to the ground and filmed by her child who was in the car. I will never forget that child's anguish screams for her mother. The woman was charged with resisting arrest for what looked to me like a reflexive movement. At her three and a half hour hearing, her four children sat the entire time behind the ICE officer who had wrestled their mother to the ground. The mother was released on personal recognizance until her trial, but with no guarantee that she wouldn't be detained by ICE as soon as she left that courthouse. She can't call the police for help. She doesn't know when or if she will be hunted down again. ICE testified she had been tracked by her license plate number. Last night, several Harrisonburg City Council members spoke in support of local immigrants and against the policies and law enforcement actions that are traumatizing the local immigrant community, including children. Their mayor wrote, "We can no longer be silent when our residents are living in fear. As leaders, our moral obligation is to protect all who live here and to use our voice to call for justice." Harrisonburg is a community of hope, of welcome and of courage. We're trying to at least let our community members know that we stand with them and that we are not supporting what is happening to them almost daily in our city. She challenged the Rockingham Board of Supervisors to do the same because we need to protect individuals, no matter if they're in the city or if they're in the town. I have a few more sentences that I'll include in my email to you.
Thank you. Thank you, Ms. Kushner. Mr. Knight, do we have anyone on?
We have no hands raised.
Is there anyone else who would like to speak? Oh, go ahead.
Thank you. It's really hard to follow Deborah. She sounds so nice. She is nice. I don't always sound nice, but I'm gonna try to. The issue surrounding the subject of license plate readers used by the Stanton Police Department is at the intersection where public government and private corporations merge together. This can blur the lines of where government and large corporations have control. Today's, these are often called public partnership, public private partnerships, regardless of what we call it. Those who support this race relation do honestly believe it will make things better. They have a foundational belief that both institutions are honest to a fault and oftentimes they are beneficial. But just in the last 10 days after our last meeting, the FBI arrested more than a dozen Mississippi officers charging them in a drug ring. In Tennessee, several former state troopers have come forward to expose a DWI quota scheme in which innocent sober people had their lives wrecked by the Tennessee State Police. And a Sandy Springs, Georgia, police officer has been charged for using a license plate reader for personal use. Could there be others? Could there be ones in Virginia that have access to our data? What can we do to protect our data from being used by the crooked ones outside of Stanton? The answer is simple, not to have the cameras in the first place. On the other hand, we have a global corporation, Flock, worth $8 billion in vigilant solutions. Motorola also worth billions. Flock has worldwide patents, sells drones and other such surveillance technology with its CEO's stated goal of, quote, zero crime in about eight, 10, eight to 10 years maybe, unquote. Clearly, further expansion of the current level of surveillance is just around the corner. We're just one more surveillance camera from the utopia of zero crime. Since our last meeting, it has become apparent that Flock has not been enforcing multi-factor authentication, which is a cybersecurity measure, best practice in today's high-risk Internet of Things world. Also, Flock has been found to have their accounts for sale on a Russian cybercrime forum by security researcher Ben Jordan. Now lawmakers in Washington are currently calling on the Federal Trade Commission to investigate the very company that keeps details of our lives. U.S. Senator Ron Wyden is now recommending that cities have their cameras taken down, calling the abuses of license plate readers, quote, "not likely but inevitable," end quote. To add insult to injury, the company tasked with keeping Stanton's data secure were found to have, quote, "Flock-related credentials for government users and info stealer infections, which can be, can provide hackers and or third parties with access to at least parts of Flock's surveillance network," according to 404 Media. Let's not think that other companies are too much better than Flock. Apparently, it's an industry issue. According to the Brennan Center for Justice, Motorola, also known as Vigilant Solutions, quote, "Sells access to its database of more than 5 billion license plate scans collected across the country, including 1.5 billion reads provided by law enforcement agencies. This process creates a revolving door of license plate scans from law enforcement to vigilant solutions and back to law enforcement agencies," end quote. Thus, creating more security risk by the transfer of data back and forth. Let's not forget that Vigilant Solution has a long history of selling data to ICE. We have been led to believe that license plate readers only pick up the vehicle and not the people inside. However, according to a recent article this week by King Five News in Washington State, quote, "King Five News reviewed dozens of photos taken by Flock's surveillance camera in the Newcastle area on September 16th. The images clearly show faces and license plates of everyday drivers, not just suspected of those suspected of crimes," end quote. Clearly, if it's happening there, it's happening here in Stanton. I have been at this issue for about six, seven weeks now. I started a petition three and a half weeks ago. I alone have over 100 signatures. Most people don't even know they're here. I would say more than 95% of the people are against them. You know, some are on the fence. There's yet to be, to my knowledge, a robust question and answer session on the whereabouts. And the way policing has been done has changed. I know people feel, feel we have complete trust in Chief Williams and Stanton PD and we want to keep that trust, but trust between the community and its governors builds an openness and being upfront. The vast majority of the hundreds of people I've spoken with, many being politically engaged people, are unaware these cameras are here, but that's changing quickly. Out of the several hundred people I've spoken with that I can count on, I can count on my fingers the number of people who are for the cameras. There are thousands of government officials and police officers with Flock user IDs and passwords. There are hundreds of other agencies that we have zero control over in their use of citizens' data. Citizens that never agreed to having their data exposed. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Knight, is there anyone with their hand raised?
We have no hands raised on Zoom.
Is there anyone physically present who would like to speak?
Good evening, council.
Good evening.
My name's Aaron Barmer, Stanton, Virginia. Um, first of all, good luck to you, Ms. Kaufman. Second of all, thank you both very much for your contributions to Stanton. I've lived here for about 20 years and it's a very beautiful place. The overlook up over there particularly is wonderful. I lived on Calorima Street for a long time. And once I started learning more about TJ Collins, it was really quite amazing that I could live in a town like this with this kind of history. And it's actually been something of a, it's actually been something of a journey, in a sense, learning about the history of this town and how it relates to where I grew up, which was Manassas, Virginia, and how I came to be here in Stanton. It's really all densely tied together in the history and the people and the architecture in many, many ways of the places that I lived and came, came from and visited a great deal when I was growing up. So it's kind of fascinating in that coincidental way perhaps, but thank you very much. As the gentleman before me said, he perhaps is not as nice as the previous speaker. I have come to a point in my life where I feel a sense of urgency. Niceness is obviously the enemy of the least fortunate. So to that extent, I have written to this council. I have written to the city manager. I have made sure that the city attorney, for now the acting clerk, have been aware of my concerns about the efforts, no matter how scant the evidence, no matter how scant of violent criminal fascist white supremacist organizations, namely Patriot Front, recruiting in the city of Stanton. And to date, only one member of council has shown vertebral access to their brain to respond to me. I would like to apologize to Ms. Woods because in my previous several correspondences to the city, I did not make clear that I don't have any. I'm not pointing that at you, ma'am. You are clearly not a party to the origin of the problem. And I do want to make that clear to you and I have not had opportunity before now to express that. So when I'm speaking to your colleagues on council, I do not mean to speak disrespectfully to you in particular, ma'am. And I wanted to say so. The rest of y'all. So previously, the mayor in writing has offered me a meeting to discuss another matter which involves city staff, which I consider pending. Previously, the city attorney has written to me offering what might have been a time sensitive offer of a meeting about a matter which is definitely pending. Mr. Blair, as acting clerk, I'm asking you to find time on council and city manager's schedule in the near future to convene a public meeting. I said a public meeting between myself, council, city attorney, chief of police Jim Williams, city of Stanton sheriff, Chris Hartless.
Thank you, Mr. Barmer. Is there anyone on Zoom, Mr. Knight?
We have no hands raised.
Oh, thank you. One more.
My name is Dolly Sees Fraser. We just moved to Stanton, retired to Stanton. It's such a beautiful city and we're so thankful of the gorgeous architecture. We've met so many people from all over who've retired here because of how beautiful this city is and because you've stopped your guns and haven't torn everything down. And I just want to thank you for that. But I would like to encourage you to consider tree canopy because the world is getting hotter. And in our neighborhood, over towards Edgewood, there are a lot of trees coming down. And for every tree that comes down, I would love to see another one or two shade trees being planted. I'm not talking about Bartlett pears. I am not talking about that kind of stuff. I'm talking about shade trees. So I just want to encourage you to include that in your city charter because I think that's very important. And thank you so much for being part of this city because I know I'm a shirker and I hate to put my neck out. And all of you are here because you're willing to put yourself out. And I really appreciate that so much, each and every one of you.
Thank you, Ms. Fraser. Mr. Knight, do we have anybody with their? Mr. Knight, do we have anybody with their hand raised?
We have no hands raised.
Do we have anyone in council chambers who would like to speak? The meeting of Stanton City Council is adjourned.